Welcome everyone to tonight's ordinary council meeting. I am the Mayor, councillor Georgina Papafodeo. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are viewing at home. Due to the stay at home and social distancing directives received from the state and federal governments, councillors will be attending this ordinary council meeting by electronic means. The council chambers are closed to members of the public for the meeting. However, this meeting is deemed open to the public via an online livestream available through a link published on the Brimbank City Council's website. An audio and video recording of the meeting will be published on council's website after the meeting. The application used to livestream this meeting requires details on registration. However, these details are hidden from all other attendees at the meeting. Members of the public will not be recorded in the process and Brimbank does not record this information. Item one, opening, please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Wurundjeri people, and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. Item two, the council commitment, I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment, others may be seated. As a council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our code of conduct. You may be seated. Item three, apologies, leave of absence. I note that councillor Tacos has submitted an apology for tonight's meeting. Item four, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Councillor Farm?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to declare conflict, indirect conflict of interest for item 12.8. That my family have a business in the shopping trip, thank you.
12.8, thank you councillor Farm. I will ask governance to place you in the holding bay when you declare your conflict of interest. Councillor Guddechir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to move a procedural motion to order, to alter the order of business, thank you.
Could you please read the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to move that the item listed as item 6.1 on the agenda be considered after the item listed as item 16.1. Two, council declares confidential in accordance with section 77-2B of the Local Government Act 1989 on the grounds provided in section 3.1 of the Local Government Act 2020, the item listed as item 6.1 on the agenda. Three, in accordance with sections 66-2A of the Local Government Act 2020 and 77-2B of the Local Government Act 1989, the meeting be closed to members of the public for consideration of item 6.1, confirmation of minutes of council meetings and report 16.1 confidential property matter and which have been designated confidential on the grounds provided in section 3.1 of the Local Government Act 2020. And four, that council makes public any resolution formed in relation to item 6.1 following its consideration after item 16.1.
Thank you. Daniel Allen?
Seconded.
Pardon?
Seconded.
Sorry, the audio is not very good.
Sorry, I'll second that.
Thank you. Does any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Madam Chair, I move that motion be now put.
Thank you councillor. Is that, is that motion seconded by anyone? Councillor Headitch, are you seconding the? I can't hear you.
No, I'm after a clarification.
Clarification?
Yes. As to why it's being declared confidential, the settling of minutes?
Well, it's been referred due, can't read it. Is that it? On that, that's not up there. Can you put that alternate notice of motion up, please? Well, we'll get clarification when councillor Guddechir speaks to it. Sorry councillor Lancashire, what was your comment before councillor Headitch?
Madam Chair, I move that the motion be now put.
Okay, and councillor David, you had your hand up. I can't, I can't hear him. Councillor David, what was that?
I second the motion put forward by councillor Lancashire.
Okay councillors, before we move on, do we need some clarification there? So. Okay, we've got a motion and it's been put to a put. So there's no discussion, I believe. So it goes straight to a vote. Councillors, I will put the motion to the vote. If carried, there will be no debate on councillor Guddechir's motion. Right, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, all those against? One, it's carried. So councillors, I will now ask you, oh, I've done that, to alter the business as she said earlier, all right. My councillors, we will now move to the next agenda item. Item number five, designation of items, we've got two items now as confidential. There are additional items to be designated as confidential for this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as confidential? Councillor Guddechir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move that motion as printed, isn't the business papers.
Okay, could I please ask the minute taker to please share that screen? Okay, may I have a seconder? Councillor Allen? Does anyone else wish to speak to this? We'll put this to a motion, all those in favour? Against, carried. So item six, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. I understand councillors, as per the previous resolution by councillor Guddechir, we will consider this item in confidential business. Item seven, condolences. There is one item of condolence this evening, 7.1 Victoria Police. May I have a mover of a motion of condolence for the Victoria Police members who lost their lives on the 22nd of April 2020? Councillor Borg?
I would like to move that council extends condolences to the families and colleagues of the four Victoria Police officers who lost their lives on the 22nd of April 2020 as a result of a roadside accident.
Thank you. Could I, the minute taker, please share that screen? May I have a seconder? Councillor Trum? Would the mover like to speak? Councillor Borg?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, our deepest condolences extended to the families and colleagues of the four police officers who lost their lives on the 22nd of April 2020 as the result.
I can't hear you.
It is an indescribable loss to the Victoria Police and to the families of those officers who died with simply doing their job. The work of Victoria Police is incredibly important in keeping our community safe and this terrible incident underlines the danger of the service you provide to us all on a daily basis. Brimbank City Council and our community thank you and stand with you and Victoria Police at this most difficult time. I would also like to note that Brimbank Council had a one-minute silence at the last special council meeting that was held on the 29th of April. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Borg. With the seconder councillor Trum like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I wish to express my condolence and sympathy to the family and fan and Victoria Police of the four policemen who tragically die while they perform their duty. It is very tough to lose four family members, that is police officer, take care of us safe and get anything. Four policemen do their job to protect the people and putting away those who do the wrong thing. Thank you for your courage and bravery. Heartfelt condolency go to the family who will be rightly, rarely proud. Nothing will fill the void of their life, but your passing has called. Deep respect and sympathy to the family of leading senior contable Lynette Tyler, senior contable Kevin King, contable Glenn Humphreys, contable Josh Fanny. I hope that our loss bring you and her family a most nice peace during this sad time. My conduct to family, fan and Victoria Police, thanks.
Thank you councillor Trum. Are there any other speakers for this condolence? Councillor Allen?
I just wanted to extend my condolences as well and implore anybody who's driving, anybody who's listening to this right now. If you see those flashing lights, it's 40 kilometres and these are the exact reasons why you should be slowing down when you see the flashing lights on the side of the road.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Okay, item eight, congratulations, there are no items of congratulations this evening. Item nine, public question time. We've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions. Just for anyone unaware, public questions are able to be received in writing by noon on the day of a council meeting. As communicated through our website and to individual questionnaires, all questions received by council before 12 noon that comply with our meeting procedure will be read out and answered at this meeting and will also receive a written response. Mr Sakurai, I understand we have received questions from the public this evening.
Yes, we have, Madam Mayor. The first question is from Mr Jamie Ramsay. The question is, council has advised a letter has been sent to the state government requesting action at the Kialba landfill to do more to put the fires out. Council, given that this issue has been ongoing for an extended period of time and has been brought to your attention multiple times, has this issue been raised with the state MP for Brimbank previously? And if so, when was it first raised and why has it taken council so long to push the state government publicly?
Thank you, Jamie. Brimbank Council has been engaging with the EPA, state government and local community in relation to the Kialba landfill issue on an ongoing basis through face-to-face meetings, conversations and correspondence. Council has also called for the establishment of a Melbourne's Westland Contamination Task Force to investigate landfill and contamination issues across the municipality and the west. As the EPA is the regulating state government agency, we continue to push for a resolution to the ongoing Kialba landfill use.
The next question is from Mr Trevor Gielnic. The question is, what are the 41 projects in this area the council wants to go ahead with? There are only a few mentioned in the article. And the second question is, will there be any community consultation and are they open to ideas?
Thank you Trevor for your questions. Council submission to the federal government for funding for roads projects was based on key priorities detailed in council's transport priorities paper and council's proposed 2020 and 2021 Capital Works Programme. The 41 key projects include Taylor's Road duplication from King's Road to municipal boundary, construction of Calder Park Drive interchange and widening of the Calder Freeway from Melton Highway to Bullard Digger's Rest Road and potentially to Gap Road Sumbury. Convert roundabouts at the intersections of Sunshine Avenue and Melton Highway and Sunshine Avenue and the old Calder Highway, Heelaw to traffic signals. The next one, road safety improvements on Ballarat Road between McIntyre Road and M80. A number of other freight and local road improvement projects are included as well. We are happy to send you the full list. Given the right, sorry, given the very tight timelines for this submission to the federal government, we had to turn the list around really quickly, so we were unable to undertake community consultation. Noting council's transport priorities papers has been developed over many years based on feedback comments from the community. Council is always open to ideas from community members which can be submitted by council's website. Thank you.
The next question is from Mr Penny Raybarts, who asks, I am writing to request council action be taken to remove fallen trees from Stony Creek, the Matthews Hill location. One has created a hazard walking beside the track. The other is very large and fallen right across the creek near the viaduct. This tree has created a net for all the rubbish on the creek and looks like a dump. Because the tree stops the flow of water, it also creates a stagnant smell. Council, when will these trees be removed? Concern resident and enjoy a clean green space.
Thank you. The answer to the first question, council officers have scheduled a response to the fallen trees at Matthews Hill and will follow up any referrals to Melbourne Water that are required.
The second question, Madam Mayor, sorry, beg your pardon. Council members, I have a further question for you in the Matthews Hill section of Stony Creek. Significant rubbish comes through the drains from local water drains creating a continuing issue of rubbish collection in Stony Creek. Can council please organise for nets to be placed over the drain pipes to capture the rubbish before it gets to the creek? This wouldn't stop toxic fluids, but it would go a long way to keeping the beautiful walking area rubbish-free easily. When could council implement this? Your consideration is appreciated.
Thank you. The draining question at Matthews Hill services a large catchment area from Brimbank and Maribyrnong City Council and consequently large flows are discharged, making litter capture by nets problematic here. Most of the drains and the creek are managed by Melbourne Water and their staff have asked that they are not in favour of an end of pipe solution such as a net for capturing litter favouring treatment upstream of Matthews Street. Consequently, Brimbank has installed cross pollutant traps in the Sunshine Activity Centre and undertaken other works, for example, a swell in the Dixon Street car park, a wetland in the Sunbell Park, rain gardens in Victor Street etcetera, to capture litter and other pollutants earlier.
The next question is again from Mr Jamie Ramsay. Council has proposed that a soccer complex be built on existing public land to enable a bid for the Australian Women's National Soccer Team to be based in Brimbank. My question to council is how does this benefit the whole community? When will the community have access to used facilities? And given the remote location, how are people without cars meant to access it? Has council considered other sites as well as within Brimbank? Given the environmental slash social importance of Sydney Park, if so, what sites?
Thank you. At the council meeting held on the 16th of August 2019, council considered a report on Football Victoria's Home of Football Expression of Interest process and resolved to submit its best offer for further consideration. In the original application, council stated it would be expecting significant community benefit in return for the provision of land under lease for the facility, with details to be further discussed later in the process. Football Victoria are yet to announce the outcome of the Expression of Interest process and when they have identified the preferred site, they will undertake further detailed planning. Sydney Park is serviced by a bus stop on the northern side of the King's Road, Diamond Interchange, which supports access for those travelling by public transport. Council has many sports facilities all over Brimbank, which provide the community with access to facilities. The development of sports facilities is in line with the recently adopted Sydney Park Master Plan and as identified in the Sports Facility Development Plan, Energy Park was also put forward as a suitable location, however, was not shortlisted by Football Victoria as an option.
The next question is from Mr John Girardi, who asks, many residents are asking for a bike walk path to be built from North Sunshine to Brimbank Park and then on to the organ pipes. Is the council doing anything to make this happen? For example, seeking government funding or putting money aside in the next council budget? What is council's position on this?
Thank you for your questions, John. Council is supportive of increasing cycling and walking across Brimbank, including providing a connection between North Sunshine and Brimbank Park. A shared user path and pedestrian bridge is being built by the developer for the River Valley Estate in Sunshine North. The path is nearing completion, while the bridge will be built as part of stage seven, which is now underway. Once the bridge is installed, Brimbank residents will be able to cross the Maribyrnong River and then walk or ride to Brimbank Park on the Moonee Valley side. In regards to extending the Maribyrnong River shared user path to organ pipes, this is a long-term action in council cycling and walking strategy. To date, a feasibility study has been completed with further detailed investigations required to resolve private land ownership and the physical characteristics of the River Valley. An alternative shared user path route to the organ pipes is progressively being delivered along Taylor's Creek, King's Road and then along Calder Freeway. The Calder Freeway section is being delivered by Vic Roads in the coming years. Thank you.
There are no more questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, item 10, petitions. There are no petitions to be received this evening. Item 11, minutes or reports of special committees. There are no minutes or reports of special committees this evening. Item 12, officer reports. There are 17 office reports for consideration by council tonight. Councillors, due to time constraints, I will not be granting extensions of speaking times for this meeting. I will review this decision at our next ordinary council meeting. 12.1, Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy. Could I please ask the director, Linley Dubble, to present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The progress report provides the second update to council on the progress of council's implementation of the Corona Response and Recovery Strategy. Considerable work has been undertaken over the month of April to adjust council services and close council facilities to the public in line with state and federal advice to protect the health and wellbeing of staff and the community. The progress of this work is detailed in attachment one. A number of important measures have also commenced to assist business and community impacted by the financial stress from the pandemic. One important recovery measure is the establishment of the Business Response and Recovery Task Force. And the terms of reference are in attachment two for council consideration tonight. The Community Impact Assessment Analysis at Attachment Three summarises the impact of COVID-19 on individuals, families and communities in Brimbank, documenting evidence derived through engagement with the community by council services and networks.
Thank you, Linley. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Farm?
Yes, I would like to have a question to Linley. As in the strategy that we already implemented, there are free refund for food premises that closed due to COVID-19. But with the businesses that still opening for takeaway only and struggling, very hard to keep their door open, are we done a thing about that as well?
Thank you, through the chair. Businesses are able to apply for consideration of their Food Act registration fees.
This may refer to Calvin, I think. What do you think?
Yeah, councillor, sorry, through the chair, Director Walsh may be able to add some more information to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council has not given consideration to refunding or waiving fees or deferring fees for businesses that have changed their business model from eating to takeaway. So council has not considered that at this point. And so at this point in time, that is not available for businesses, only for businesses that have closed.
Okay, thank you Calvin. Councillor Headitch, is this a question for Linley? Thank you.
I'm just wondering, Linley, with the Business Response and Recovery Task Force, when we might be expecting to see some listing of the initiatives that council is proposing to put in place after the consultation with the Brimbank Task Force? Just wondering about a timeline.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Through the chair, Madam Mayor, that question would be best directed to Director Walsh. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The task force has only met once in its full capacity and the process is a co-design process. So the, given that the, in the initial stages, the task forces meeting fortnightly and once we have had a couple of meetings with the task force, then we'll be able to provide a report to council as part of the monthly update report on the timelines that they are setting through the co-design process for the initiatives. But that's all, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? All right, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire, a seconder, councillor Borg, would the mover like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the motion as put in the papers.
Thank you. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. This is a progress report on the implementation of the Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy. It includes the status of the 55 actions in the strategy. One of the key actions to date is the completion of the proposal for state government initiative working for Victoria to create up to 300 new roles at council that engage local residents impacted by COVID-19. In addition to assisting the participants, we developed proposals for jobs that would greatly assist with our community during this period of time and also leave an improved legacy for the community. With this report, there are two additional items for consideration. The first one is the endorsement of the Terms of Reference for the Brimbank COVID-19 Business Response and Recovery Task Force. And the second one is a Community Impact Analysis, which summarizes the impact of COVID-19 on individuals, families and communities in Brimbank, documenting evidence derived through engagement with the community via council services and networks. Information related to the impact on the local economy and business sector is being completed within council's City Strategy Department and will be further informed by the Brimbank COVID-19 Business Response and Recovery Task Force. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Bork. Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering if we're going to hear from the mover of the motion?
Sorry?
I'm just wondering if we're going to hear from the mover of the motion?
I did ask him initially and...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I put the motion, but I didn't get an opportunity to speak to it. Apologies. I would like to speak to it if that's...
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank the officers and the mayor for their significant work in this area and in particular, the team working on addressing the COVID-19 issues. The list of actions being completed is substantial and impressive. I would like to also comment on the business support and assistance response. The development of the e-bulletins and the website resources has been accessed by many organizations and small businesses. The feedback we are getting is that it has been very helpful and informative. The work in this area has been informed by the business survey, which has had 146 responses. I would like to thank all those who have responded. I note that our business team is delivering 21 business sessions as webinars. These sessions can involve up to 50 people and I understand that they have so far all been fully booked. We are offering, in association with Victoria University, 25 business mentoring vouchers. The uptake of these vouchers is encouraged. There are also minor grants available to help small businesses with homeworking, deliveries and online payments. There are grants also to help businesses to become social enterprises and grants to help businesses to boost their activity. The list goes on to include 12 actions and to help businesses. Finally, it must be said that the council's infrastructure department is doing a great job in very difficult circumstances, keeping our Capital Works Programme going and helping to support local jobs and businesses. As with councillor Bork, I also recommend this report to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, it's extremely important that this report is coming back to council as a progress report. The community need to understand that council has been doing a lot of work in this area and it is quite a lengthy report with a couple of attachments to it, quite a bit of information in there so that the community and council also can understand that our CEO and officers have been extremely busy in trying to deal with this crisis and trying to alleviate most of the concerns that the residents have. Of course, it will be a working document, of course, because there are issues arising every day. However, on a very good note, Madam Mayor, I had a resident ring me today on an unrelated COVID issue and at the end of talking about her issue, which was a dust issue, she mentioned to me that she was extremely happy with our home library service and that our library staff actually rang her to ask her if they could be of service. So she gave us a 15 out of 10 on that service. So it is widely accepted out there that council are doing an enormous job in unprecedented times, trying to deal with all of the things that our residents would expect us to do. And I can allay those fears, Madam Mayor, because I know that we're all working extremely hard to make sure that council continues services in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm just wanting to say a few words with my prosperous Brimbank hat on. I'm really pleased to see the Business Response and Recovery Task Force is formed. We're hearing a lot around the traps from small business in particular, that there are real issues in that sector and that there is a real call for council to really get some initiatives together promptly and to start investing in recovery as soon as possible. So I guess I'm putting a plug in on behalf of the many businesses that have spoken to me over the last few weeks. I was at my GP the other day and he said, "What the hell is council doing about the recovery strategy?" And I told him a few things and he was a bit happier. So I look forward to the reports that come through monthly. I look forward to the identification in each of those reports, the initiatives that council has come up with and some costings beside them that tell us how much council's investing, because it will be quite a bit, I'm sure. But we need to see all that data as it comes around and we need to see it in a relatively timely and accurate way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. I'll put it to a vote, those in favour, against, carried. And can I just say, it is a fabulous report for our community and I do commend everyone that was involved. Thank you. Report 12.2, Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decision for April 2020. Could I ask our director Calvin Walsh to present the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a monthly report to council on the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in the city of Brimbank. And it also provides council with an overview of the decisions made under delegated authority during April of this year regarding planning permit applications and other matters. Councils are asked to note the planning activity update and delegated decisions as detailed in the attachment number one.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire? Do I have a second to? Councillor Hiddich? Would the mover like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved the motion in the papers and would like to speak to it too. The, this report is very interesting. It gives me great confidence for the future in that the pipeline of work in Brimbank has doubled, as listed in the paper, from 32.1 million in April 2019 to 65.9 million in April 2020. This is an amazing result, given the circumstances. I wonder how we compare to other local government areas, but I can say, well done to the planners who are getting through this amount of work in processing planning applications. So thank you and I would recommend this report to the councillors.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak?
I'd just like to say a few words, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I guess I echo what councillor Lancashire said, but I also wanted to add that for another month, there's been multiple months in a row, the Harvest Ward continues to have a really high number of planning applications going through the system. And the impact of that on a ward that doesn't have a lot of parks, doesn't have a lot of sporting facilities and doesn't have a lot of general community infrastructure is enormous. And over time, the cumulative effect of that creates great pressures within the particular suburbs that make up Harvest Ward. So I commend the report to council, but I also ask councillors to think really deeply about the impacts of each of these different approvals that are going through and what it does to the livability and strains of going to particular suburbs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other councillors that would like to speak? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. The 12.3 Governance Report, May 2020. May I ask the Director, Dan Hogan, to present this report?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, you'll be aware that the monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. It is the summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles. Written in compliance with provisions applying in both the Local Government Act of 1989 and the Local Government Act 2020, the report variously informs council of delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions or second relevant decision for council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second to? Councillor Bork? Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Mayor. It is a monthly governance report and it is a standing report to council and every month we have this report with different things in it from time to time, but it is always in accordance with best practice and good governance principles and to ensure compliance with the Local Government Act. Of course, as the portfolio council of the Brimbank Innovation, which does include governance and property, as always, I like to highlight the importance of this monthly report to council. This month, the matters include council's risk report, councillor representative and delegates' reports from committees and records of assemblies of councillors. Due to the many impacts though, Madam Mayor, of COVID-19, the way we conduct our business now and into the future is of great importance and that's why this report is even more important now, because it provides accountability, ongoing transparency and reassurance to our community.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Bork, would you like to speak?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. As a member of the Social Justice Coalition Strategic Implementation Group, I would like to briefly comment on the meeting we had on the 11th of May 2020. At this meeting, we focused on the COVID-19 crisis. We had two comprehensive presentations. One provided an overview of council's response and recovery strategy, including the key economic and health impacts, federal and state government packages, strategic pillars and actions to date and the planned implementation and reporting processes. The second presentation provided an overview of the COVID Community Impact Analysis Project, which has been endorsed by council earlier this evening. A following discussion looked at ways we can work together with the community. This was highly productive and I would like to thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I also wanted to support the report. The issue that I wanted to focus on was the risk management policy that's attached to it. Really important for council that we have a good, strong risk management policy. I also understand from our briefings that it will be reviewed in the not-too-distant future. I think our strategic risk register is something we need to have a little bit closer look at to make sure that it does come past through council on a regular basis for approval and for some input as it goes. But I think the risk management policy overall is something that we should value very highly. We have a lot of big projects, a lot of big issues facing this city in the coming years. This will be an important document and an important process that needs to be run across a number of those initiatives. I commend the report.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other speakers? I'll put it to a vote, all those in favour, against, carried. Okay. Item 12.4, Quarterly Financial Report for the period ending 31st of March 2020. Director Shane Ma, could you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is presented to council on a quarterly basis and it highlights council's financial results for that period and also looks at what our forecast result is expected to be at the end of the year. This report is presented to council for noting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification, councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. A question of Shane. The report shows that there's been an impact of around $10 million from COVID this financial year so far. There have been figures quoted before to us for the next financial year's impact. Can you give us an updated figure of what you think that might be?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Some of the costs in there, an annual cost where we've had things like fees waived and that, so that could be a similar figure to next year if that impurs. The big one is around the assumptions made behind the deferral of rates. And we've made assumptions there that around $7.5 million of rates income may be deferred, so it will still be recovered, but just maybe in later periods for this financial year. And if we use those same assumptions going forward, this is based on the fourth quarter installment, if you use the same assumptions going forward, it would be around the $30 million, which is around four times that figure.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I'll move the recommendation as printed is in the business papers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second to? Councillor Hiddich? Would the mover like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It is a quarterly report and of course, we report every quarter, but this quarter seems to be much more important with the crisis that we find ourselves in. But it does show how council is travelling. There are lots of variations, of course, due to COVID-19, but also due to our Capital Works Programme at this time of the year. We always review the Capital Works Programme and some projects are ahead, some projects are behind, some projects perhaps will have to be deferred, but that's something that this report doesn't exactly show, but will show by the end of the year. However, it's important though that council does report this to our community. It shows that council is in a low-risk ratio at the moment and this is important as the COVID-19 implications allow us to understand better how it has and how it will impact our finances in the next year or so. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, I echo the words of councillor Goodie-Chair around the Capital Works Programme and the likelihood of some fairly significant numbers around carried forward projects and impacts on next year's budget. I guess also, I'm particularly interested in how this council now moves from the draft budget it originally had started settling on into a new budget to be produced over the coming months that picks up just how we are going to deal with COVID over the next year or two and what sort of projects and initiatives we will be stopping and the money we will be putting into COVID-type initiatives around business and community and various other things that recovery takes. I guess for me, I'm hoping that we are very innovative and that we are very comprehensive in what we do. We will see long-term unemployment, we will see homelessness rise, we will see all sorts of things happen as a result of COVID-19 lockdown and the impacts on business. That impact will flow on for many years to come. So council, I think with its role as the first layer of government next to community, needs to consider its role in a little bit different way than what it has in normal business as usual senses and take that extra step or two to do something more as we go forward. That will have impacts on budgets if we adopt that strategy. But I look forward to council's discussion about the type of strategy we want to put in place to bring about recovery after COVID and the type of things we're thinking of doing and not doing as a result of that. So looking forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, councillors? All right, I'll put the report to a vote, those in favour, against, carried. Okay, item 12.5. Okay, item twelve point five, Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee Terms of Reference Review twenty twenty. May I ask Calvin Walsh to present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report presents the revised draft terms of reference for the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee for council's consideration. The revised draft terms of reference provide a refined purpose to maintain. A successful partnership and regular dialogue with key stakeholders about the development of the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct. They aim to assist the rebid realising the vision for the precinct outlined in the Brooklyn Evolution Strategy two thousand and sixteen. And that they propose changes to the composition of the committee, which would see it having representation from council. Industry and property owners in the precinct and the Environment Protection Authority. Councillor asked to endorse the revised draft terms of reference at attachment one. And enable officers to undertake a range of actions to operationalise the revised terms of reference. Including calling for expressions of interest to join the committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Calvin. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor David, you've got a question?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the officer's report as written.
No, Councillor David, do you have any questions or points of clarification? Sorry, that was cut off. So could you repeat that because I missed it?
No, I haven't got any questions, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Headitch, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Yes. For Director Walsh, my question is around the options that have been considered in terms of this particular issue. We know that. Brooklyn is a suburb that has, it's fortunate to have three local government area boundaries and. Community sits in two of them, which are Hobson's Bay, Marybunong and Brimbank, has the industrial precinct. My question is. Has an option been considered where we have an independent chair, we have a group of councillors who. No group of councillors, a group of members who are from the industrial precinct, there's a significantly increased number. And the existing numbers of community members on that particular committee as a third option.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that a range of options are not detailed within the officer report presented to council this evening.
And Councillor Headitch?
Just a clarifying question as to whether an option like that would be one that's suitable.
Sorry, I dropped out a bit. Councillor, sorry, Madam Mayor, can I have the question again?
Yes, the question was, would that option, that independently chaired committee option with committee members and. Precinct, industrial precinct members on it be a suitable option?
Thank you, Councillor Headitch. Madam Mayor, we have not done the analysis on that option, so that analysis is not available for this report. And therefore I would be reluctant to proffer an opinion on suitability.
Will there be an analysis made in the near future?
The, the report is presenting the option that has come from consultation with the existing committee members. And therefore, having listened to the existing committee members and acknowledging that we also have. The BCRG, the, the, the committee representative group operating in parallel. The officer recommendation that is presented to council this evening is as detailed in the report and. In the, in the attached terms of reference.
Any other questions or points of clarification? Councillor Headitch?
No, I was wanting to move an alternate motion.
No, so councillors, any other questions or points of clarification? No, do I have a mover? One, two, three. Who do I, who put their hand up? Sam? Sam? Sam?
I did call earlier that I'm moving the officer's report as written.
Okay, do I have a second up? Kim? Would the mover like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will. Yeah, thank you. In two thousand and ten, council established the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee, which met for the first time ninety years ago in two thousand and eleven. Council established a committee to inform the preparation of the long term planning, design and development strategy of called Brooklyn Evolution. The Brooklyn Evolution Strategy was adopted by council in two thousand and twelve. And council has been steadily working towards implementation ever since. Council revised the terms of reference in two thousand and fifteen to focus the committee. On giving feedback about projects amenity issues and amenity issues. Council has also been working towards building representation of business of the committee. Which currently includes the members for the precinct and three residents from neighbouring municipalities. The revised draft terms of reference, Madam Mayor. Attached to this report aims to further focus on business development capacity, building business in the precinct. The draft terms of reference propose increased business representation. But maintain the presentation of the EPA. To keep a focus on improved business operation to minimise amenity impacts on the surrounding area. The draft term reference no longer include community representation from outside Brimbank municipality. This is because the Brooklyn Community Reference Group. Provides the forum for community presentation and includes community presentation for neighbouring municipalities such as Hobson's Bay, Marybunong. Brimbank City Council. There has been confusion between the role of the Brimbank, sorry, the Brooklyn Reference Group and the committee. This is better forum for raising community concerns about compliance. It is attended by EPA councillors from Brimbank, Hobson's Bay, the Marybunong councils and council officers. Draft terms of reference aim to maintain successful partnership, regular dialogue with key stakeholders in the precinct. With a focus on investment, business development, amenity improvements, planning and compliance. The stronger focus on business development will assist in the improved operation of business and further investment. And is in line with the council's economic development strategy and living Brooklyn strategy. Madam Mayor, I strongly recommend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the second like to speak to this?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the one from council David. And I also, it's like saying I become the councillor, I usually come to the meeting of the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Community. And I see it, the Brooklyn community always provide a opportunity for the member of the community to discuss. Issue about the general Brooklyn area. So I think the chair is will allow the community to have a greater focus. On the business development, which is more a priority given the administrative requirement, the community to support by the council economic development unit. I think is by, I fully recommend and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? Councillor Headitch?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, I wish to speak against the motion. My, my reasons are that, as I said earlier, Brooklyn is a suburb that has the misfortune to have three local government area boundaries in it. It is one suburb, one neighbourhood, but one local government area, Brimbank, looks after the industrial precinct. And the two other local government areas, Marybunong and Hobson's Bay, look after the residential precincts. The trouble is, Brooklyn is one community and the residential community and the industrial community live side by side. And there are issues to both of them as a result of that. These two committee structures we currently have in place have been there for a long time and they have helped. Resolve a tension between those two groups, the industrial group and the residential group. The industrial precinct committee that Brimbank is responsible for has had community members on it for a long time. But there is, there seems to be a problem with the industrial people wanting to see less conversation about complaints. And more conversation about planning and development of the industrial precinct, which is fair enough. It seems that the problem is the chairing one, that we don't have a, a chair that is keeping the business to the planning and development space. And therefore it's getting off track a bit. But to take the community members away from it risks, I think, for Brimbank a complete loss of trust. The Brimbank, the Brooklyn community has been able to rely on attendance at both. The industrial precinct and the Brimbank Community Reference Group to deal with its development issues through the precinct group. And its compliance issues and the complaints it has through the community reference group. My, my take on this is that it has been underdone, this particular initiative in terms of consultation. There's been no consultation with the various councils, the local member for Williamstown, Melissa Horn. There's been no consultation with a number of different groups in that community. So my suggestion is that we think about options that do include community in both groups. But do tighten up the industrial precinct group to make it a planning and development group fully by putting on an independent chair. The other thing I would say is that the Brimbank Community Reference Group that we all go along to regularly. Is totally focused on complaints. EPA comes along, it is like that nearly all the time to absolutely load in now an agenda around planning development. And there is no time available generally. And there is no person there with the skills in that strategic planning area to talk about it so far. It needs some discussion with the people who run that group. And we are, we are going ahead with this as if we can push the community, the community members off the precinct group. Without any conversation and then have the other group pick up the load. For me, that's folly and it's risk for Brimbank. I do not commend the report.
Thank you, Councillor Headitch. Councillor Allen?
Sorry, can I get a clarification on, on what councillor Headitch is saying? So, so you've got, does that mean he's got a, because he mentioned an alternate motion, is that like a foreshadow or is that? Is that?
No, he's just.
And then? Sorry?
Councillor Headitch is speaking against the motion.
Okay, so there's no, okay. And then to his point about a lack of consultation on, I missed a few, there's. There was no consultation with a couple of other stakeholders being other councils. Is it possible now to get a clarification on that? Or is that?
I'll ask Calvin Walsh to respond to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, 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 the report that is before council is addressing the. Terms of reference of the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee. Which is a committee solely of Brimbank. And it, and it did have residential resident members on it previously. We undertook consultation, so it's an advisory committee to council. Charged with providing us input on the implementation of our, our strategy. To deal with Brooklyn, the Brooklyn Evolution Strategy. Council officers undertook consultation with the existing members of the committee. About the operation of the committee. Of this committee, which is the committee of solely Brimbank. There is a separate committee that. Its operation won't change and that's called the Brooklyn Community Representative Group. So in short, yes, there was consultation undertaken with the existing. Members of the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee.
So Daniel Allen, does this clarify your question?
No, I don't think it does. So what I meant, to clarify what I meant was. Was there supposed to be some consultation with other stakeholders that involved, say, other councils? Because you've got the resident area and then the industrial area. So is there something there that we were supposed to do? I'm just trying to tick all the boxes and make sure we haven't, haven't left anything out. That's.
Madam Mayor, the officer's view or our view is that as this is an internal advisory committee to council and it is our. Basically council's view on how you want this committee to operate. The consultation that we have undertaken is adequate and. Acceptable. For the review of the terms of reference. We wouldn't have done anything further than this in the past with terms of reference of committees when we brought it to council.
Okay. Councillor Headitch, you've had a turn to speak. Is this a question that you need? Or something that you need a clarification on?
I need to clarify, two clarifications. One is that I spoke against it and the second point is that I also said that I was. Foreshadowing an alternative, an alternate motion at the very end. So I spoke against it and I foreshadowed.
Oh, alright.
And the second point is that I guess with this one, there has been a, an assumption made that the. The community can pick up all the information around planning and development that has gone through a industrial precinct committee.
You've had.
I'm asking you a question, yeah. The question's coming.
Yes.
There's an assumption made that the load from that industrial precinct committee around. Community knowledge can be transferred immediately across to the BCRG. That's not the case. The BCRG has a very full agenda without a planning application going to it. And so I asked the question again of Director Walsh, just how that load is expected to be picked up when there has been no community consultation. With the BCRG convener or the other councils that are involved in that committee, namely Hobson's Bay and Marybunong. Thank you.
You, Madam Mayor. The, I'm not quite sure what the load is that councillor Headitch is referring to as the operation. Of both committees doesn't in any way diminish or fetter the opportunities that members of the community have in relation to. Making submissions to planning applications or making submissions to. Planning strategies or initiatives that might be placed in the public domain for. For exhibition and for asking for, you know, community comment.
Councillor Headitch, does this answer your question?
One, one other part in terms of.
Sorry, I missed the, the first part.
No, no, there's one, one point that wasn't picked up was around the load. My understanding is that the industrial precinct committee goes.
What's your question, please?
My question is, my understanding is the industrial precinct committee goes for about one and a half hours each time. How does that load get transferred into the BCRG, which already has a two hour meeting of its own without all that one and a half hour input coming into it?
I'd have to take that question on notice, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Right, councillor David, you've got a right to reply to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a sore hand.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you for that. Look, I think councillor Walsh explained it proper, but in reference to councillor Allen, just to pull a bit more. Interest into it, the Brimbank Committee Reference Group has been going for more than twenty years, Madam Mayor. I have been going there yesterday myself and councillor Judy just remember that as well. We've been visiting that group, same, same as our officers. We've got an officer there, a young officer, Simon Vittorio, which attends that meeting as well. The councils or the municipalities of Marybunong and that of, and that of Hobson's Bay attending. And of course. It's a huge, it's a huge gallery between thirty and sixty five people sometimes. EPA is there. So they got their, a person running the show there, chairing the night meeting. And indeed councillor Headitch. And indeed councillor Headitch and councillor Trum attended that meeting quite a number of times this year. Now, over the years, the meeting that we have in here at council, never, ever, any of the councils and municipalities of Bruce Bay or Marybunong and that of Hobson's Bay shown any interest is coming to us at all. And those meetings of Brooklyn, which we attend periodically.
David, you've got 30 seconds.
30 seconds, yeah. Okay, those meetings that we're having at Brooklyn periodically, Madam Mayor. It, it is made for Brooklyn every time.
Hold, hang on a minute, point of order, what's, what's the point of order, councillor Headitch?
Relevance, Madam Mayor. The two, two LGAs are never invited to that meeting.
Calvin, can you clarify that, please?
In, so, thank you, Madam Mayor. The page 147 of the Agenda Pack provides council with an understanding of who are the attendees proposed at the meetings. So currently the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee has Brimbank businesses, representative ward councillor, Brimbank council officers, the EPA and, and I understand currently operating has the two, or has resident representatives on it. The, the BCRG, the Brooklyn Representative, Community Representative Group attendees is residents and businesses from Hobson's Bay, Wyndham, Maribyrnong and Brimbank council areas. No Brimbank residents attend with the exception of Brimbank councillors. It also has councillors on it, the EPA and council officers.
Thank you. Calvin, Sam, you've got about 11 seconds left.
11 seconds, wow, yes. Look, it just perhaps explained to councillor Allen that this is the precinct, the industrial precinct is our site, it's nothing to do with the, the cities of Hobson's Bay or.
Councillor David, your time is up. Thank you. Okay, councillors, it has been foreshadowed, so if this is not carried, we will go to the alternate motion that councillor Headitch has. All right, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour of the officer recommendations, hands up please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against? One, two, three. Okay, so it's carried. Thank you. Councillor Headitch?
Division, division.
Yep. We needed a division card, yep. All right, those in favour again, could you please put your hand up? No, leave it up please until I call your name. Right, councillor David? Councillor Allen, councillor Lancashire, councillor Aziz, councillor Goodrichet, councillor Trum and councillor Papafodio. Those against? Hands up please. Councillor Headitch, councillor Farm and councillor Ball. Thank you. Okay, the next report. 12.6 Final Draft Brimbank Community Engagement Evaluation Report. Mr Walsh, could you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The draft Brimbank, sorry, the draft Building Brimbank Community Engagement Evaluation Report comprises a draft, which comprises a draft community vision, was prepared through an extensive community engagement programme in late 2019. At the ordinary council meeting held in February this year, council resolved to endorse the draft Building Brimbank Community Engagement Evaluation Report for the purposes of community consultation for a four week period. This report presents the outcome of the community consultation and a final version for consideration by council. Council officers recommend that council consider the submissions received, adopts the final draft Building Brimbank Community Engagement Evaluation Report, which is at Attachment 1, and undertakes a range of administrative actions advising key stakeholders and participants of council's decision. Thank you.
Councillors, do I have any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodrichet, a seconder councillor Headitch. Councillor Goodrichet, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Mayor. It is a very, very lengthy report, a very, very comprehensive report. And an enormous amount of work has gone into this report, but it is a very, very important tool, a very important document, not only for this council, but for state government agencies and departments to be able to reference into the future as Brimbank grows and investors become interested in Brimbank. Thank you very, very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, please. Look, I'd also, I'd echo what councillor Goodrichet said. I'd also like to commend Rebecca Solomon for the fabulous piece of work her and her team have done. It's a, it's a big report, but it's a quality report. And yes, there were some difficulties at times getting people to make submissions, but in the end, there's been a strong body of, of input. And we have a very strong set of, I guess, principles and key, key issues raised in this report that will give guidance to the Department of Job, Precincts and Regions and Rail Projects Victoria as this goes forward, and also to others who want to have a look at at what, at Brimbank and what the people of Brimbank think in terms of vision and particular elements of vision. For me, I'm, I'm really looking forward to this piece of work being, dropping down a level and having a look at how it might be applied when the Deer Park Railway Station comes along, when the Sunshine Transport Super Hub comes along, and various other projects that are mentioned in the Western Rail Plan begin to occur. As we know, Brimbank is a, is a city of many suburbs and many communities. They're not all the same, and so we have, it's great to have the overarching document here, but we do need to drop down into those other areas to work on what the, what the differences are as well and to understand those. That can also be put to the, to the funders and builders and value, value creators around the area who will invest over the years to come. So I commend the report. I think it's, as I said, a quality piece of work, one that the officers and the directors should be proud of. And I look forward to further development of it at the next level down. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers? I'll put the vote forward, those in favour? Against, carried. 12.7 Submission to Consultation on Permanent Planning Provisions for Non-Government Schools. Mr Walsh, would you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 21st of April of this year, the Department of Environment, Land, Water, Planning and Planning released details of proposed changes to five different aspects of the permanent planning provisions relating to non-government schools. Comments were sought by the government by the 22nd of May this year. This report presents the draft Brimbank submission for council's consideration and endorsement. Council is, is, council is asked to endorse the draft submission to the, to the, to the state government. And the proposed submission is detailed at Attachment 1. And if endorsed, notes that the submission will be provided to the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning by the due date 22nd of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a mover for this report? Oh, sorry. Any questions or points of clarifications? Councillor Farm?
I would like to ask that in the draft submission, are there any change or any consideration in changing of the way how the car park around the school is because as I can see at many school around municipality or, you know, around the state. It's a chaos every time people come pick up or drop up their kids, so. And I bring this question to the Metropolitan Transport Forum and other transport forum that I go to, raising this concern, but I don't know if in this draft submission, are there any mentioning of, you know, look, relooking at that matter. Thank you.
Council officers are very aware of the issues related to car parking and I, I, sorry, I was just, and in the attached submission, there, there is reference to matters to do with citing and design, including the car parking issues which are detailed on page 276 of the, the Agenda Papers.
Thank you. Parking seems to be an issue with every school, councillor Farm. Good question. Any, any other questions or points of clarification? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Oh. Yes? Oh, we haven't moved it. Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodrichet? A seconder councillor Headitch? Would the mover like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. I would like, first of all, I'd like to move the motion as per the business papers. And also, Madam Mayor, just to say, it's very, very concerning that the non-government schools and government schools for that matter, already have problems with their traffic management, parking and some of their infrastructure as well. And it concerns me greatly that residents will no longer be able to have a say in this, as is currently the case. Not being allowed to have an independent review is not okay, not in my book, and I believe it's not okay in this council's book either, and certainly won't be okay by the residents. But I thank their officers for their submission and I recognise the importance of residents being allowed to object and appeal. And I certainly hope that the state government does listen to us on this, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Headitch, would you like to speak?
I would, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words. The officers have done a great job here. There is a very pragmatic submission being made and I think many of the features that are set out in that report identify just what sorts of issues councils have with private schools that, or independent schools, non-government schools that do go on a enhancement programme, a development programme in a fairly laissez-faire way and what that means in terms of impact on council and council facilities, on streets and roads and various other services that are offered around the areas. I think the, the proposal from the government is, its intent is good and it's trying to speed up approvals and things like that, but the the outcome, if this work isn't done properly and effectively, can be very, very telling on communities and I commend the, the officers for their, their openness and the granularity of what they've put together. There's a whole lot of it in there. Making very clear suggestions about what should be done and shouldn't be done and around potential impacts if things aren't done correctly. So it's a very good submission. I commend them for it. Commended to the councillors as well.
Thank you. Any other speakers for this report? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Item 12.8 Draft Car Parking Management Plan for Sunshine and St Albans and Draft Parking Permit Policy. Councillor Farm, you've expressed a conflict of interest. We will put you in the holding bay and someone will let you know when it's time to come back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr Whiteside, could you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council adopted the Brimbank Parking Strategy in August 2019. Two key actions from the strategy included the development of the car park management plans for the Sunshine and St Albans Activity Centres and the development of a parking permit policy. This report provides an overview of the development of the draft car park management plans for both Sunshine and St Albans and also a draft parking permit policy and seeks council's endorsement of the documents for the purposes of community consultation for a six week period. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I move the recommendation in the papers.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Allen? Would the mover like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The draft car parking management plan for Sunshine and St Albans is a substantial body of work and I congratulate the officers on their efforts. The plan provides detailed management parking plan for the Sunshine and St Albans Activity Centres. It also includes a residential parking permit policy to inform the delivery of a residential parking permit scheme. The parking provided in these areas represent a substantial community asset. Ensuring that the community gets the best value out of this asset is very important. In this regard, I have heard the term sweating the asset used, which simply means we should be getting the most out of our car parking areas to benefit the community. The principles of this strategy include fairness, access for all, affordability, management first, sustainability, quality urban spaces. A six week consultation process is proposed. I encourage everyone to have a look at this detailed draft policy and provide their feedback to council. Again, well done to the officers in preparing the report and I recommend this report to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Allen?
Just to say that I echo what councillor Lancashire has said. And yeah, pieces of work like this are very important as we manage our very precious car spaces into the future and I look forward to seeing what comes back.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrichet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a significant piece of work and we have been waiting quite a while to receive this report, Madam Mayor. I remember when we first got elected, we started talking about parking. And all this time, this work has been done, all of the analysis. The consultants have come back with six principles. They are equally as important as each other to form the framework for this important policy as Brimbank moves into the future. I urge all interested residents to please have a say on this. The four types of permits, of course, Madam Mayor, will be residential service provider, works zone and carers. All of these are at a reasonable cost except for carers. Carers, of course, have been recognised as very important citizens in our community and so they should be. Their permits will be at no cost and this is in accordance with the principles in the report and our community first council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I wanted to add a few words regarding the context that we started these car parking management plans in. We will recall that we were getting information that the Sunshine Transport Super Hub was going to come along. We were having multiple discussions about the Brimbank Multi-Deck Extension that was approved by the administrators before this term of council. We were talking a lot about the stresses that were in St Albans at the time and how we needed car parking management plans to be able to consider all of that in a, a more measured and, I guess, informed way. We now have a really, as councillor Lancashire would have said, a very, very consolidated plan, a lot of detail and a lot of consideration. And we are asking that the community give us some really solid feedback on this. The, the issues, I think, around the six principles, I see them as the fundamental part of this that will make it work. I'm not so, so sure that they are all to be treated equally. Generally, you weight these things to, to see which ones are the most important. I, I guess we've had a long number of chats and briefings around management first principle and existing car parking assets, assets and resources being managed to improve efficiency, getting the most out of what we've got before increasing provision. But we also talk about fairness and we also talk about affordability and so on. They're all very important as well. But squeezing the asset has been the key matter that's been identified by the officers as we've gone through this process. I think some of the outworkings of it, we're noticing. I think some of the outworkings of it, we're noticing over in Keeler, for example, the censors have caused an issue that have been put in at, at night because there hasn't been sufficient communication, it looks, about that. And that we need to be really careful when we put together a car parking management plan and some different aspects to it that we do communicate regularly with our communities to identify just what is proposed to happen, when it's proposed to happen and what, what its intent is. And I guess that's one of the key lessons for me over the last few weeks. But again, I commend the officers. This is a very substantial report. It's been done with fairness and, I guess, equity in mind. And I, I'm quite happy to commend to councillors that we put it to the community for their feedback and take that on board in any revision that happens to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Headitch. Any other speakers? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just would, would like to add, I think it, the car park management and the parking permit policy is really important because Brimbank is developing now, especially in Sunshine and St Albans. We have more business and more residents to move in this area. I think the car park is one of the, the needs from the member in the community. I agree with the council, so headed is like we need to get the feedback from the community because I think this is the daily issue for all the residents and the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Trum. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, this is a wonderful report put before us tonight. It's, it's been a long time. But thank God, officers, for having this put before us tonight. The residents, the ones that live close to the stations and especially the ones around in the hospital. It'd be a happy Christmas maybe for them or Happy Bay round. It is a fantastic news for all of us. And thank you again, officers, for that report.
Okay, any other speakers? Well, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. All right, we need to invite Councillor Fabb to come back. Councillor Fabb, could you please state your name?
Councillor Yuen An Fham.
Right, councillors, could you please indicate that you can hear her and see her? And hear her? Yep, thank you. Okay, item 12.9, Proposed Sale of Land at 130 McIntyre Road, Sunshine North. So why the hands up? Sorry. Councillor Goodrich and Councillor Headitch, why are your hands up?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, it was a mistake.
Councillor Headitch?
Too early, ma'am.
Oh. Okay. I thought I've done something wrong. All right, 12.9, Proposed Sale of Land at 130 McIntyre Road, Sunshine North. Mr Whiteside, could you please present the report?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Mayor. At the ordinary council meeting on the 15th of October 2019, council considered a report on the proposed sale of land at 130 McIntyre Road, Sunshine North, and resolved to undertake the statutory community consultation process. The consultation process has been completed and a total of two submissions were received. A summary of the written submissions received, including the council officer responses, is an attachment two to the council report. One of the submitters requested to be heard and presented at the Hearing of Submissions Committee meeting held on the 3rd of December last year. A summary of the proceedings of the Hearing of Submissions Committee meeting is an attachment three to the council report. Madam Mayor, this report is for the, is to provide the outcomes of the statutory community consultation process and for council to consider the proposal to sell council land at 130 McIntyre Road, Sunshine North. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, before you start putting your hands up for moving a motion, do we have any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, a question for Director Whiteside. I guess the, the issue that I'm trying to get my head around is that we definitely have a, a policy here that we're, that the officers are recommending that we follow. The issue I have is around when there are extraordinary events and the impact of extraordinary events like COVID-19 on policy. We know that we have a, a big homelessness problem in this city. And I'm just wondering if Councillor, Director Whiteside can give me an insight into how extraordinary events impact on thinking and decisions around policy implementation.
Thank you, Councillor Headitch and through you, Madam Mayor. So ultimately, the council resolution of the council meeting on the 15th of October 2019 required council officers to undertake the statutory community consultation process and to provide a report back to council. Council officers are presenting that report tonight for council's consideration. Certainly, if council feels the need to, to further report or to consider an alternative motion, that's in the council's hands to undertake. Ultimately, it's not for officers to determine that course of action. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Sorry, questions or points of clarification? Councillor Fabb?
I just want to ask, if this is going ahead, what would the figure that council were looking at roughly selling this land for? Just curious.
Councillor, sorry, Mr Whiteside?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank the councillor for the question. Look, if council does proceed as per the officer recommendation with the sale, the recommendation does talk about officers seeking professional advice about the sale process, particularly given the current COVID-19 situation. We would obviously seek a valuation, well, a process to help us inform what that price might be that council determines ultimately delegating to the CEO to accept. But I don't have that valuation advice at this stage, Councillor Fabb. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or points of clarification, councillors? Now, do I have a mover? Councillor Lancashire? A seconded, oh, sorry. Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved, thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved the officer's recommendation in the papers.
Right, Councillor Headitch, you had your hand up next.
I was going to put my hand up to move an alternate motion, Madam Mayor, which I'd circulated to councillors beforehand.
Yes, so you, if this doesn't, Carrie, are you, do you want to foreshadow this?
I do.
Okay. All right, so I need a seconded for Councillor Lancashire. Councillor David? Okay, Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the report identifies the highest and best use of this site as residential. The sale of this residential lot will allow this to be achieved. The sale of this lot will benefit local residences and council by reducing maintenance problems in the area. It is noted that part of the proceeds of this sale will go towards fast-tracking the upgrade of the Northumberland Road Reserve to a suburban park under council's capital works programme. This is a great result for Brimbank and residents in that area. I strongly recommend the officer's recommendation to sell this site and to put part of the proceeds into developing this suburban park. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor David, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I don't know how many, in all respect, councillors nor the property at all. But the reason why I, I don't want to sell properties, but this type of property is situated right on the bend of Exa Road and that of McIntyre Road. It's about four houses. That four houses in that little street, it shouldn't be called McIntyre Road at all. So if you're going home and going through McIntyre Road, you don't go through McIntyre Road to go to your house. You have to turn right as you approach the McIntyre Road to turn right into Waterig Road and wait there for the own traffic to go, to come along. Because if you are going home in the evening, in the afternoon, the pickup traffic is, it's, it's, it's lacking. You know, you haven't got time to cross anywhere. But again, you have to wait until time given to you to turn right into Waterig Road, turn left into Tudor Road and go on the end of Exa Road. And then you have to wait again for the traffic to go through and take a chance and turn left to go to 130 or the other houses there, the other four houses. So to do that, it will cost you about at least close to, close to a kilometre extra time. It is very dangerous, little corner, Madam Mayor. If we don't sell it today, if we don't sell it now, it will, it will stay there another 50 years, as it is now. And nobody asks the question, why is this allotment stay there for so long? This is the problem, Madam. Very, very dangerous indeed. It is very, very dangerous. And I touch on, a councillor Lancashire is saying, if we successfully sell this allotment there, $200,000, we're going towards Northumberland Road, which that's what people want, the residents want. They want open space and we tend to do a suburban park there for them. And that's what, that's what they want. They've been lobbyists all along for the last four years, nearly four years have been cancelled. They want open space. This is what we're doing now. So I recommend the recommendation by, a supportive recommendation by the officers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will go through a number of points fairly quickly. In, in the, I guess, in the Brimbank area, this particular sale will be the, the sixth one, as I understand it, during the life of this council. Four of the, four of the five that have been sold already have been sold in halves, so this will be the fifth. Councillor David mentioned there being park shortages in the area, that's correct. But the sale of this land and the $200,000 that will go to Northumberland Reserve will not fix the park problem in this particular area. By doing up a small pocket stamp sized park in Northumberland Reserve will not fix the poor access problems that people at this end of the North Sunshine suburb have. I also wanted to add that residential best use is the recommendation from the officers. This isn't a dangerous, pokey little piece of land, it's a good piece of land. And we all know that, from the briefing the other night, that Brimbank has the largest homeless population in Victoria now. Largest homeless population in Victoria. Things have changed since all this information came to us about this particular sale of this particular site. We talked about the need to enhance the, the parks and, and playgrounds shortages in North, in North Sunshine. But we also talked about-
Hang on a minute, there's a point of order. Councillor Lancashire?
Madam Mayor, I'm just concerned about going on about the, the homelessness being irrelevant to this report. This report is about the sale of land.
Point taken, thank you. Councillor Headitch?
This is about options for sale of land. I'm foreshadowing an alternate and that is what it's about. The, the op, the option here is to actually not sell on the open market but to sell nonetheless at a, at a good price to a potential homeless service provider to try and do something as a council, to contribute some action to solving the big homeless crisis problem we have in this city. The recommendation, as I read it, is about budget first, getting the best possible price for this plot of land. When what in fact is needed at the moment in this city is a community-first approach to both get a good price but also to deal in a, in a small way through what council can do with some of the homeless crisis that is going on here. That homeless crisis will not depart. So an option to actually sell the land to a homeless provider is a good option.
Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, we're, we're getting irrelevant on, onto the, an issue of homelessness, which is not relevant to the sale of this land report. So I'm concerned about the constant drifting of discussion on this, going outside what is the actual boundaries of this report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
What's your point of order, Councillor Headitch?
That, that, that particular comment is just out of line. This is all about options. This is all about sale of land and the options of sale of land. I can, having foreshadowed an alternate, I can talk about that.
Okay, Councillor Headitch, I will allow you to continue. You've got 55 seconds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, so the, the option that I'm asking is that in this report, it's been very clearly laid out that we actually take our time to get professional advice on the best way to sell this land, given that the COVID impact is here. And when is the best time to do it? Potentially six months' time. Why wouldn't you take that time to actually have a conversation with a homeless service provider and a professional real estate person about what might be able to be done? These are good suggestions and they are suggestions that solve two problems. They get a good price for us potentially, but they also help us solve part of the homeless problem. So for me, I think we should be putting community first when we consider this. Community first, meaning a dual approach of thinking about what we can do to, to help with the homeless problem and thinking about what good price we can get as well. That's a dual win-win, rather than just a budget first, which is about getting the best possible price of the land and we leave the homeless issue to someone else when we have an opportunity to do something about it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just in time, Councillor Headitch, thank you. Councillor Lancashire, you will have the opportunity for a, a right to reply. But I'll allow the other councillors to speak first. So Councillor Borg and then Councillor Goodrich.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to, to speak against the recommendations in this report. I think, first of all, I'm very familiar with this plot of land, where, which is, where it is situated. And I believe that it is in a very strategic place. It is in, within a residential area surrounded by people. And I believe the issues that Councillor David mentioned are not relevant because they are the same as the other issues that are being faced with other, by other residents who live around this plot of land. I would also like to say that as a local government, it's important for us to think outside the box, especially now because of the coronavirus. And we need to put on a lens through this and see what ways we can utilise this plot of land for better uses, again, using the Corona, the COVID-19 lens through it. And one possible way of doing it is what Councillor Headitch has already mentioned with regards to homelessness, which is, which continues to be an important issue to the municipality. It suffices to say that council has already responded to this and taken part with regards to the commission that, inquiry that has taken place recently within the state government. So I really endorse what Councillor Headitch is saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was next? Any other councillors? Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question. Brimbank council does not have a homeless policy at the moment, do they? Do we?
Councillor Whites, sorry, Mr Whiteside, would you respond to this, please?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, we, council doesn't currently have a policy as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And also, council had resolved previously to actually sell this piece of land. But unfortunately, due, due to an administrative error, it is now brought back before us. So having said that, Madam Mayor, I know that the other councillors have said that COVID-19 may make a difference. COVID-19 will certainly make a difference, especially to our finances, I can assure you of that. As for the homeless, I think that that is a separate argument. It is not an argument that should be had within the sale of this land. As I said, council had previously resolved to sell this piece of land. There are some relevance issues to this piece of land. I have to agree with Councillor David, it is not in a very good position. And when the, the bridge was built there over on McIntyre Road in North Sunshine, I think that whoever built that bridge did not really take into account the effect that it would have on those residents. I do know some people in that area and that block of land has always been a, a, a bit of disdain for.
and that block of land has always been a bit of disdain for them. I would have to say that I would not go back on my previous decision. I will be in favour of going forward with the officer recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, councillor Allen, and then councillor Favre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I take the point that councillor Judichair has said that, yes, we did resolve to sell the land. I also take note that it did, it did come to us where we asked, well, you know, are we going to be a housing affordability or homeless provider? And the decision was no. Having said that, and having said the foreshadowed motion that comes after that, it doesn't say that you, in that foreshadowed one, it doesn't say explicitly that you have to. It just says that we would see what the offer would come back. Now, the, from speaking with the council officers previously, they said that whatever amount that you were going to get, it would be significantly less because you're doing it for the purpose of, you know, affordability, or whether it's homelessness, or whatever it is. So having said that, I am actually going to say against, I'm going to vote against this one, simply because foreshadowed doesn't say explicitly that you have to. It just says that you're going to get more information on that. And that's fine. It's just a bit more information. It comes back. Is it, you know, we don't like it? Then so be it. So I'm actually going to vote against it.
Okay. We had councillor Favre next, and then councillor Good, no, councillor Goodrich, you've already spoken.
Yes, thank you. I have seen the note that 200,000 will go toward Northumberland Road Reserve. That's sound good to me. But my question is that councillor David was saying this is the extremely dangerous position. And if we can sell it to a resident development, that's going to be good, wipe off our hands. But who are we pushing this to? If he mentioned a dangerous location towards someone, whoever they bother and stop you, you know, you are in a dangerous, you know, location. So that comment made me feel very uncomfortable. So who are we, can I, can I get a buy? If we're putting this out to the public or to a resident who want to buy it, in another world, we're going to say that, okay, this is a very dangerous location. It's your own problem if you buy it.
Is this a question for a director?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr Whiteside?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So look, as I understood councillor David's comments, I understood that to be in relation to the land being used as potentially open space, and therefore not suitable for that use. In relation to the use of the land for residential purposes, there would be obviously processes that the landowner would have to go through as part of developing that site, which would consider all of those issues. I should say there is houses on either side of the land. And so from that perspective, I don't consider there to be any safety issues in relation to that site in particular. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Lancashire, you've got the right to respond to this.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, look, the points raised by councillor Judichair are quite valuable in the sense of what's being put forward is very much a separate argument. We have no policy to suggest that we take an alternate course. And there is no nexus between that and taking an alternate course. The report here is about selling the land for residential use. The property was clearly part of an original residential subdivision. And as such, am I being interrupt, Madam Mayor? Sorry?
Yeah, wait a minute.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, as to relevance. Councillor Lancashire is saying there is no nexus between the use of this, some of this block of land for homelessness purposes. There is. There are options for selling this land, if that's-
Councillor Lancashire, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, look, it's, this report's about the sale of a land that was obviously part of a regional residential subdivision. It is now to return that to residential use. As such, that is quite appropriate. In this case, the proceeds in part to go towards improving a park, which is an excellent idea to that. All of that is in accordance with the policies the council has. I fail to see, and it is dangerous for a council to go off without having a nexus or policy in the areas being referred to. Quite dangerous.
Point of order.
Relevance, Madam Mayor. The language of being dangerous to adjust policy in the time of crisis is absolute nonsense.
Councillor Lancashire, you've got 30 seconds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said, this is very simple. Councillor Judichair summed it up quite well. We are selling this and getting the income from it to put towards parks. We don't have any policy to justify any other use, nor do we have a nexus to establish any other use. So what we're doing here and recommended by the officers is in accordance with council policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, hands up, please. One, one, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? One, two, three, four. Carried. Councillor Headitch?
Division, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Hands up. All those who voted in favour? Councillor David, councillor Trum, councillor Goodrich, councillor Aziz, councillor Lancashire, and councillor Papafodio. Those who voted against? Councillor Headitch, councillor Favre, councillor Borg, and councillor Allen. Thank you. Okay. Reports 12.10 to 12.17. Do I have a councillor who will move that as a block motion? Councillor Goodrich?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll move reports 12.10 to 12.17 as a block in accordance with 52 of the governance meeting procedure local law number one. They are all relative to contracts, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a second. Councillor Trum? Councillor Goodrich, would you like to speak to these?
No, Madam Mayor. Simply because of the virtual meeting, the contracts are not, well, not very interesting. But the due diligence, I can promise the residents, has been done on these contracts. And the officers' recommendations are all in line with our governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Trum, do you have any comments?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do I have any other speakers? All right, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Okay. Item 13, notice is a motion. There are no notices of motion this evening. Item 14, notices of motion for rescission. There are no rescission motions. Item 15, urgent business. Madam CEO, is there any urgent business? No. Thank you. Item 16, confidential business. There are two items of confidential business this evening. Councillors, we previously resolved to close the meeting to consider this confidential business. Thank you to everyone who is currently viewing the live stream of this meeting. This meeting will now be closed to members of the public. It will be placed in the holding bay for the duration of the consideration of the confidential items. As the, as the last items for this evening, members of the public may wish to cease viewing, in which case I would like to thank you for your interest in tonight's meeting. The meeting is now closed at 8:59 PM. Okay. I thank you again for your patience. I declare this meeting reopened at 9:41 PM. Council has considered the confidential items and resolved them will remain confidential at this stage, and that council will make any resolution public to relation, in relation to item 6.1. Meeting closed. Thank you all for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting closed at 9:42 PM. I instruct the host to stop recording this meeting. Thank you.